Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the July 9, 2020, meeting of the Dyer Town Council. Due to the unique nature of these meetings, the Town of Dyer will only accept public comments submitted electronically. If you have a question or a comment about an item on the agenda, please email that question or comment to publiccomments@thetownofdyer.com. We will ensure that all submissions are shared with the elected and appointed officials of the respective board. The submission will also be entered into the minutes of the respective meeting. Please list your name and address in your email for the meeting record. Please keep your comments civil and constructive to the policy issues on the agenda. I would like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a consent agenda before you that includes the minutes of the June 11, 2020, town council meeting, the minutes of the June 25, 2020, town council meeting, minutes of the June 25, 2020, executive session, and claims totaling $2,180,220 and 2 cents. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Bob?
Hi.
Alan?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Steve?
I got a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You have a question?
Well, yeah, I wasn't here for the one. You got two sets of minutes within one agenda.
You can vote in favor abstaining on those minutes.
I vote in favor of abstaining on the minutes from June 11 and vote in favor of the rest of the agenda. Yes.
Okay, so the minutes should say that Councilman Kramer was absent for the June 11 meeting?
For the record, I was on the phone with the council meeting.
Right, right, right. Okay, would you like to amend your motion?
The motion does not actually amend it.
Okay.
It's his vote simply that he's approving the consent agenda but abstaining as it relates to the minutes.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, roll call, please.
Bob?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Alan?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi. And announcements, July 29, the comprehensive plan review with steering committee will take place. And second, second town council, RDC meeting, if necessary, will be on Wednesday, July 29, following the comprehensive plan review. Any other announcements?
Yes, on July 23, their deputy police appreciation, which is out of the nutrition. So hopefully, Dyer could show good showing.
Okay.
And all the police and all the towns in that town.
All right, thank you. On reports from the town council.
I have nothing at this time.
Alan?
I have nothing tonight.
Eric?
Just a couple of announcements. Tuesday, we had our first advisory board on disabilities that we formed last year. Meeting went very well. I'd like to thank Christine Ward, Alicia Myers, April Moran, Mark DeRue, and Barbara Butcher for participating. I really think that there's going to be a lot of good to come out of that committee for the Town of Dyer. Also, on the same night, we had our first Dyer Community Market. Went off very well. Approximately 500 people came, ate purchased items, listened to music, and had a good time. I'd like to thank the Parks Department, Michael Shea, Andrea Daley, Barb Jankowski, and also our two citizen volunteers, Beth Vandergrind and Melissa Herbert, for the countless hours of work that they put into making that event a success.
Just a couple of issues. One is about three meetings ago, the town council approved to put an investment into cleaning up Pheasant Hills Pond.
Yes.
And we have seen nothing. If we're looking for it, we also, the second part of that was to ask the other boards and commissions to partner with us.
I've got a, I met with the storm board after that meeting, and they gave me some advice. And I'm preparing a report for you'll have that.
Thank you.
Okay, that's not lost, okay? It's good, it's more than what you anticipated if you want to do it a certain way. But you'll have that report. I'll get it ready for you at the next meeting.
Appreciate it. And the second item was, I was in the park on a Saturday, and there were people from out of town with assault rifles in our park. I inquired about if we had an ordinance to wear code against it, and I was told, no, we don't. But we should probably consider one. There's no need to have any type of weapons like that in our parks for any reason. If they want to exercise their rights, I'm all for it. I'm a Second Amendment supporter too. But they should do it in a proper way and on the streets. I'm happy to say we had a good presence of our police department who did a magnificent and professional job. But the concerns from residents, parents, and kids in the park that day were coming up to me and asking why we allow any type of weapon, such as assault weapons or anything else, in our parks, and especially from people from out of town. So those were the issues. And at some point, I encouraged and asked the council and the parks to consider making an ordinance and or code whatever needs to be done to ensure. I know I was at the community market, what a great event. Kudos to everyone who helped out there, did a magnificent job. But I could not envision with all the little kids and the families and parents there why we would allow anyone to carry assault rifles and other weapons through there. So those were the concerns brought to me by a lot of residents. So I promised them I'd bring it up for the council. So at some point, maybe I'll bring it up again at the study session. But those were the major issues. Thank you again to the police and fire department that were out there. Community market, Parks Department did a great job, so thank you.
That all?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I would like to thank the police department and all the surrounding police departments for quick action last Sunday night. We had a little incident on our, not a little incident, we had an incident on our end of town the other day, and the residents thoroughly appreciated all the communication that was being done and caring for the residents in that part of town. Also, there will be a Dyer and Blue meeting on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday and the 7, on July 14 at 2:30 in the afternoon. We invite everybody to come. As you can see, there's a lot of beautification going on around town, and thanks to that group. Clerk Treasure, do we have any announcements?
Yes, our auto debit, we've increased so far, not done yet, 475.
Wow.
So that's good. We're still putting them into the system. We got a lot. We're putting another letter into the newsletter.
Good.
So.
And I think the beauty of that is, is that you're not being penalized with.
You're not paying INGO.
Right.
The penalty for doing it. And I can't blame them. Who would want to be paying a service just to use their credit card?
Anything else?
Nothing else.
Town manager?
I have nothing other than what's here.
Words and commissions, Frank?
Essentially, on the sanitary side, we, at our last meeting, we awarded the bids for our sanitary line repair and lining project. And as mentioned, then, this represents the, all the structural fires or worse, structural pipes in the town, at least at this time, came in at roughly half of what the estimate was, which was good.
Yeah.
A lot of competition out there. Right now, going through, receiving paperwork from the contractors, and hopefully here in the next upcoming weeks, we'll get the notice to proceed. And of course, you have the pre-con meetings and continue forward with that work. So we're looking forward to that. On the phosphorus removal, which we discussed at the prior meeting, that's currently well into design. So working to get that design completed and refined with Jeff and his staff. And in upcoming months, we'll go to IDM for permit and ultimately on to bidding and construction hopefully here to get that project moving and going. Comprehensive flow monitoring, NICE is still waiting. That's of course, all the monitoring we've done throughout town. We've had all the rain events that we needed for that. NICE is awaiting some reports and some data sets from the company that did the flow monitoring so that they can go in and take their first step of this, which is developing that performance map of our collection. So that's well underway as well. At the last meeting, we discussed alternatives to the above-ground storage tank to provide risk mitigation, redundancy, resiliency in our distribution system. And after extensive discussion, it was decided to take the approach to move forward with interconnections with adjacent communities, Munster, Sherwood, as well as having, installing a redundant distribution line from the booster station into our distribution system itself. So that package is what we're pursuing right now. The staff and engineer are looking at kind of fleshing out the details of what that's going to involve. We've got some approximations on cost, but again, that's in development and probably can't happen soon enough because over, which you all know here, on July 3, we ended up having a break on that very supply main that concerned us.
Yep.
That's our third break in the last three years, and our second break in the last few months at that line. So that work, again, everybody worked, I think, effectively to get that break repaired. It was a situation where we had a very hot day, high usage on a holiday with fireworks. So it was certainly, you know, I always talk about the Black Swan events, and that was one where it had us concerned. But everybody worked effectively. It appears to be related to pipe corrosion, which has been an issue along that line. So that's being pursued as part of, you know, resiliency and risk mitigation. Our system is looking at what's necessary to reinforce or improve the reliability of the existing line. So I think you guys seen some images and some photos of repair and of corrosion.
Yes.
But again, that just underlies and validates our need to have these other alternative means, operational means in place. So we're working, everybody is working very diligently to resolve those issues and of course, get our alternatives in place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Parks?
Eric, for the park board side, in our last meeting, the park board awarded the Central Park Ball Field project. In our last meeting, the park board awarded direct construction with our Central Park project coming up. That project entails the fourth ball field being built, block paths, and ponds. Especially getting started very soon. And we'll try to finish out that project in October for that. And then we're in the process of working with CSK Architects, Sam Architect, and Fire Division to work together to build a residential facility over at the S.R. Center as well. And we'll be talking about that in our next park board meeting. And then just to echo down what Eric said, the park of the great communities old, did well. I would say we have 38 vendors overall. Our next event is the 21st of July. And right now, we actually have 39, so it was a good crowd, especially the 4 o'clock crowd. It's really good, much better than I expected at 4:00.
Good, thank you. Chief?
Thank you. For June, we had 900 incidents, 10 arrests, 36 accidents, 98 citations, 156 warnings, and 42 ordinance violations. Staffing update, we're currently at 29 sworn officers, but the approval via 32. Process is started about midway to hire the three for the vacant positions. And we're anticipating in August, at the commission, we'll be able to swear in three new officers, bring us up to a full staff of 32.
Good.
Our K-9 unit, we have a date for schooling. It's August 24, five-week class. At the graduation of that class, it'll be a certified patrol dog, so we'll have one signed to each of the, one in the daytime, one in the nighttime, so they each have access to it. For special events, excuse me, we have not canceled National Night Out yet, but we're working very closely with the national organization and the surrounding towns to kind of monitor what the norm is going to be as we approach the date. I should have an announcement here shortly from our liaison, Corporal Kishin here at Corporal Patrick. Does anyone have any questions?
Good night was National Night Out supposed to be Sunday?
First Tuesday of August.
Yeah, I couldn't remember the date.
I can tell you, it's probably not going to be a similar style event. If we could tell at that date, it would be something a little more socially distanced and lesser, zero food vendors.
Yeah, 4th.
Yeah, August 4.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Jeff?
One thing I want to add, Steve Hump has been forward. He's been delivered by the end of August.
Okay.
And then we'll develop and provide support.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Resolution 2020-10. I'm sorry, I forgot Neil. Oh my goodness, Neil.
Northgate project proceeding. The 2020-10 of saving the world project that we were awarded in April, we are still waiting on INGO contracts. Tom and I did get an email probably a week and a half ago that they're proceeding now that they're moving into their next fiscal year. So we, we also have those by the end of July, and that's a project that's scheduled to go through this year and into next year with at least $689,000 funded to do it now.
It's not going to be one where they start it this year and never get it done until next year?
We talked to the contractor and said, you understand it's a 520-day schedule. Anything you open up, we want to have serviced by the end of the year. We don't want to do all the utilities, patch everything, and leave it over the winter, you know.
Right.
We don't maintain it, but we'd rather have to do a part of the project completely than all of the project in. So yeah, I've already talked to Brett for a moment over there.
Okay.
And they agree with that point. The last one is unfortunately, the CCMG 2020-2 application is on hold as a, my understanding is the reduction in the gas tax this year. They're going to revisit that in late August, early September, so they're making additional opportunities to apply to that. But in terms of what we looked at for those 2020-2 projects, we put those on hold right now because it doesn't make sense to prepare an application until we know they're going to be ready to go. But even if that is done in September, by the time they award it in November, possibly December, that'll be a 2020-year project.
Okay.
Okay, thanks so much. Any questions?
Neil, which projects will be put on hold?
Those were in the 2020-2 resurfacing. I don't have that list with me, but I believe it was 215 Procos and a couple of projects on the areas off of Castle Wood.
Right.
I think Kelly Place and.
Yeah.
There, King, I think King's on the road, but there were several. That was on that list that Tom prepared for you.
No, I.
We're, based on this information, we're going to meet probably next week. You'll see later in the agenda, an extension of prices from Walsh and Kelly, which is, we just literally got today. We're going to be able to figure out exactly how much money we've got and what we're going to be able to do. We're going to come back to you with a revised list that will take into account what we call the local road resurfacing that I talked about a month or six weeks ago, whenever that was. I don't see us changing the 2022 CCMG things. We'll keep that in the hopper for them because they're bigger projects. What we will take a look at is what else we will be able to do, given the reduction in prices and the fact that we don't have to have cash for the CCMG stuff done. So let me see, we may expand in some other things. I'm not going to do, I have a petition from a subdivision to repave a Pazer 5 street because there's a couple of potholes and bad sections. What we're looking at is to go into parts of town where we've got situations like that, where there's a good street but a bad area. And we'll get in and we'll work with Walsh and Kelly because we're now able to do that because we're out, you know, it used to be either or, the whole thing or nothing. But I think now we're getting to that point where we can squeeze some of those things. And we'll hopefully have a better report for you, or a full report with being able to make an award at the next meeting. So that's kind of where we're at.
Any other questions? Thank you, Neil. Ordinance and resolutions, Resolution 2020-10, declaratory resolution, temporary loan. We're not going to do anything.
You don't need to take any action. The reason I put this on there was, if you recall, the last time I said we were going to follow up.
Right.
And this allows us to kind of track it, Bill's advices. We just leave the declaratory resolution out there. If we need it, we can activate it and deal with it. But, but we're fortunate enough, we got our settlement, which is another item on the agenda. We didn't have to make any temporary loans, so we're in good shape. I'm pleased with that.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes, that's good news.
Yeah.
In old business, we have a status, budget status and oral report.
Well, basically, you got the tax settlement memo that's dated July the 9. No, I'm sorry, there's a property tax settlement, which is this sheet of paper here. Shows you the details of what the tax settlement that the clerk's office received towards the end of June for the July, June, July settlement. So a little bit less than we normally get, which is what we anticipated. But we are able to make all of our.
Payments.
All of our payments and our cash reserves are in pretty good shape. We're in the midst right now, starting probably next week and going for the week after, meeting with departments to go through their first six months and then their last, getting ready for the 2020 budget, which is an 18-month process. So we're going to take a look at what the last six months is going to look like, both on the revenue side and expenditure side, see what, see what has come up unexpectedly that is non-COVID-related because the COVID-related, we're able to ask for reimbursements. So we're also working on that, but we're looking at staffing and a number of other things. So we'll have, we're going to keep moving on this. So as we get into the budget stuff, we have some more.
All right, and the COVID, that runs all the way to December when we can.
Yes, right now, it runs through to December, but it's any expenses we've made. But it does not, you have to remember, the most, to us, at least in my opinion, the most important thing it doesn't cover is lost revenue.
Yeah.
And I use the perfect example of the Parks Department, which basically shut down.
Right.
And being able to show the loss in things like gas tax revenue, which relates to MBH. You can't recover that money under a reimbursement. So that's, that's a problem we're going to have. And some of our, some, the low it, which is the income tax, is going to lag in the next year. We're waiting for the, we're going to get an estimate from the state as to what they anticipate. And I figure it's going to be probably in the neighborhood of 20% of local option income tax, which has an impact when it deals with public safety. We've got two local option. One is the ceded fund, which is discretionary kind of funding, but the, the public safety we do use for police and fire, it's going to have an impact. And all these things ultimately ripple back to the general fund. And it's the, it's the fund with the largest number of expenses and the least flexibility in revenue. And when we lose those things, it hurts. And it's the same thing, we're looking at the utility funds and what they're able to help share and make their payments to the general fund for services provided. And it's all, it's all a big jigsaw puzzle.
When do we expect anything from Baker Chili about utilities?
They, I, it's been a week or two since I've talked to them. They were asking us, and we're putting together the, the, the major capital and like placeholders essentially.
Right.
And now that we've gotten the, the storage tank issue resolved, that piece has been done. So we look at that, and then we're putting everything else together, but they're looking, they're finishing up their stuff. And they're still working remotely, the last time I talked to them, which has been difficult. But we'll see how it works out. But I'll get you something. We'll have something hopefully by August, in August.
Okay, thank you. The mid-year financial position?
It's, I think it's kind of all wrapped up in the same thing.
And the good news with Walsh and Kelly?
Yeah, you can see they've extended their prices. So what I'd like the council to do is to do this, and then we'll have the redevelopment commission do the same things, if we have any tip streets that we're going to be able to do some work on. So we'll just carry it over to the redevelopment commission also. Right, there's a way to do it. So what you do is make a motion that you accept Walsh and Kelly's offer to extend the 2018 annual material services bid for the 2020 construction season.
So I have a motion to approve the Walsh and Kelly extending the 2018 material pricing.
A slow motion. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bob?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Alan?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Hi, and the vote is 5 to 0. We're all in favor of it. Do we have any citizen input, Frank?
We have not received any comments at publiccomments@thetownofdyer.org.
Okay, anything from the audience? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
My name is Rich Soga, and I live at 829 Jacobs Court.
Okay, can, they'll give you a microphone.
I live at 829 Jacobs Court. I was just wondering, does anybody know about the telephone service? Is there any information out there?
From the other data, Tom, I read?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, best to understand that there was some AT&amp;T fiber that was struck on the highway there. And it, the way it works with a, obviously, AT&amp;T services were affected, but it just so happens that a lot of other carriers, including Verizon, utilize AT&amp;T circuits. So any of those other carriers were also affected. So it created basically issues with cellular communications, mobile communications, as well as a number of other carriers.
Well, I have my mobile service, which is good, but my landline is out.
As far as it's, it's still out?
Yes.
Okay, and it's with AT&amp;T?
Yes.
And you have a service ticket with them?
Well, I called them, and you've got to go through all the voice props. They're telling me that it's not going to be up until supposedly June 12 at 7:00 AM.
Okay, yeah, as far as those landlines, I'm not aware of that. All of our facilities are functioning, you know. But that's, that's news to me in terms of what that outage looks like. But I mean, I certainly can inquire and find out what, what the extent of that is and if that timing's accurate or not.
You know, who you're dealing with, those people, it's hard to choose.
Yeah.
I don't think their information is as accurate as they say it is.
Well, if you provide me with your contact information, Rich, then I can, you know, contact the people I know. And hopefully, we can get you a better answer than that, so.
I got another question. On this county project, on this bridge project, does the county give the town updates? Is it on schedule or at 25% completion? Things are going long school? Does anybody give that information?
Yes, we get periodic reports, and Brian Lane and others go out there on a fairly regular basis. I think people from Neil's office go out there. I know that they had an incident where one of the workers tested positive for the virus, so they had to go into that mode. And that's why no work had been done earlier in the week. So there was a problem earlier with locating an underground utility. It was not where it was supposed to be. That delayed a whole bunch of things by a day or so, and that just rippled along. But they're moving along. They're on schedule. We haven't been, we haven't been told that they're going to be behind by a month or so. So they're moving along. It's just a slow process, Rich, is the problem. They've had problems with, with the, the part of the bridge they're driving on is in worse condition than they thought. So they had to do some temporary shoring up, and that delayed, you know, it kind of delayed any forward progress and stuff like that. So that's what's going on with it. The sooner the better.
I like that, the sooner the better.
Well, they could have gotten it done half the time if we'd have closed the bridge, but that really wasn't practical. That's why Main Street got done so quick, because you had it, you had a detour available from both sides of it. It got done in half the time.
Yeah.
Mr. Soga, we appreciate your frequent updates on Facebook as to the progress of that construction also.
I go to have the Saturday, and I want to kind of take a walk over there and see what's going on. You know, this is supposed to be done November, okay? You know, I, you know, I have my doubts. You know, I can understand with COVID, somebody tests positive, you got to go into a different mode and all of a sudden, you know. I mean, to me, I hope it's done by November. I mean, to me, this is a big inconvenience.
Rich, I wonder too about that big, heavy piece of equipment that's sitting at the bottom of the creek right now. Have you seen that? Okay, that's what I'm, I'm glad you're here, yes.
It's been raining for two weeks.
You're right.
Public Works never leaves you, does it, Richie, even though you retired out of there?
I know. Yep, and that's good.
That's right, we appreciate that.
Thank you for your input.
Mary, I have one other thing. I have a K-9 donation of $25 if the council could accept that.
Okay.
Motion to accept.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call.
Hi.
Hi.
Alan.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Hi. Vote is five to nothing to accept the donation. That is the end of our meeting, so I will accept the motion for adjournment.
I have one question.
Yes.
Any and all, there's not a representative from the Fire Department here, I noticed on their monthly report. The monthly report, there's a line that says had crews on standby for local rally at Pheasant Hills Park. Would that have been EMTs on standby or was that Fire Department on standby for a rally? Do you know, Chief?
I can answer the most unofficial way that you allow me to. I know that the duty crew was on duty that day and that they also backed, built the duty crew with two additional members so that they could be dedicated to our detail, but wouldn't take away from the services to the rest of the town. Mainly staffed in for medics.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have one comment. I saw some pictures on social media that I went out to the parks, especially Pheasant Hills and North Gate the Sunday after the Fourth of July, and they were a disaster. There's liquor bottles, fireworks everywhere. Do we have an ordinance against fireworks use in the park by citizens?
There's an ordinance against fireworks use anywhere. Didn't work out very well for the last month or so. I mean, it'll be, but that's the problem.
Right.
I mean, yeah, yeah.
We have a limit to have maintenance littering in the park.
Yeah. Same issue with, you know, it's, yeah.
Right.
If you don't catch them, you go in and clean it up on Monday in this particular case.
Right, I mean, I have a right to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will say that was one of the most amazing Fourth of Julias I've ever seen in Dyer. The citizens really did well for themselves.
They did it up north too, I'll tell you.
They sure did.
Sounded like a war zone until two o'clock in the morning, most of the time, it's crazy.
Any other questions? Roll call, please, for adjournment.
Bob.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Alan.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Next, we have the redevelopment commission meeting. And again, I will read the same statement. Due to the unique nature of the meetings, the Town of Dyer will, will only accept public comments submitted electronically. If you have a question or comment about an item on the agenda, please email that question or comment to publiccomments@townofdyer.com. We will ensure that all submissions are shared with the elected and appointed officials of the respective board. The submission will also be entered into the minutes of the respective meeting. Please list your name and address in your email for the meeting record. Please keep your comments civil and constructive to the policy issues on the agenda. With that, we will begin the redevelopment commission meeting. You have a consent agenda before you, you have the minutes of the June 11th, 2020 redevelopment commission meeting. And Steve, we want to note that you were remotely.
I was going to abstain, well, because I was remotely on June 11th.
Right, right. The minutes on the June 25th, 2020 redevelopment commission meeting and claims totaling $2,016,651.88. You have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Bob.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Alan.
Hi.
Steve.
Oh, yes, except for the minutes of June 11th, 2020. I will abstain from that.
Mary.
Hi. On reports, attorney's report?
I have nothing to report.
Town manager report?
Same.
Status of fire station construction, three-week schedule.
Just an FYI, the word where things are moving along, just to kind of keep in the loop. We have progress meetings every two weeks and things are going, it took form, took the forms off of the foundations and now it's moving along to start getting plumbing work, you know, sketched in and that type of stuff, so it's moving along pretty well.
Is it helping that the road is closed?
No, because they're, they're not doing anything in the road, the trucks just go in and out. Road will be open next week, so.
Okay. Next, we have the request to allocate TIF funding for furnishings and fixtures.
I was hoping to have, here's what I'm working on, we're, as we, with the construction, I've got the construction money set aside. I will bring to you at the next meeting or an upcoming meeting, a report on what we anticipate. So I want to have a, like a lot, an allocation, so I, you know, basically we, we got like an extractor, we got a lot of things we have to buy for the station as we build it. And I want to have a set aside a part of a budget for that, that whole thing, so. Oh, I didn't get that done, I was out sick in the holiday and, as you can tell from the agenda, it's a little on the spare, our side, so. But I'll have that for you, I just want to let you know what we're doing.
Okay, and the update on the Central Park?
Well, I think Michael, Michael did a nice job of what we just bid. Between those two projects, we've got a lot going on, they're going to start the water main and the sanitary sewer coming from Calumet to the park, which is a big park part of that park project. Brian was meeting with the Public Works guys this morning. We're going to go into those four houses to determine, all their septic's are coming out of the rear.
Yes.
But they'll have a sanitary sewer, so we're going to see what the situation is and come back with you with some options. But they technically have to hook up if, if it's 300 feet.
Right.
So they'll abandon their, their sewer line, we'll come up with some, how you want to handle, give you some options on that. But that's the good news is that Rex Construction, which is doing the underground at the fire station, has also got that job. They're going to get moving on, on everything here pretty soon, so that's moving along. We've got, Mike will be meeting with the park board next week to talk about the concession stand. And we've got some 3D renderings, we, the architect has done.
I like the rendering.
Layout.
Checking those out today.
And stuff like that, so that's moving along. And the price of the bids keep coming in the way they are, we're going to be in great shape, we're going to be able to keep moving these projects along, I mean, this, the, the ball field thing was pretty much just a little over half of our estimate. So that is good news, that literally almost puts another project, it slides into baseball lights within, within another project, that's, which is really helpful. The baseball, the lights probably won't get done till over the winter or the spring, but it does give us flexibility to actually move it up in terms of where my, my, my budget plan was and stuff like that, so I, I'm real pleased with the way things are going.
Good news.
Okay.
Tom, I was out at Patriot Park in Michigan City for a softball tournament this past weekend. I noticed they had a field of solar panels that they use to, for all the lighting, all electricity needs at that park. Just want to keep it on, keep it on the radar with this, I think we're very well set up, not a lot of trees to block out sunlight. That we could probably try, we try to take advantage of some of this new technology.
Yeah, it's been a year or two since I've been there, so I don't, I haven't seen this, this must be relatively new, because I used to work out there quite a bit. Take a look at it. And it's, it's a question of how much land do you want to give up? And, you know, for the solar panels versus like a windmill, I've seen some of those kinds of things, but you know, we can, we can take a look at that concept.
Yep. Good idea.
It would be ground set solar panels as opposed to what we talked before about.
Talked about on the south side of the roof.
Yeah, on the roof, and then you got to change the structure of all the roofs and everything else, so we'll take a look at some different options.
There's a whole field of solar panels on Route 231 in Lafayette. I mean, a field, a huge field. And I don't know what it feeds into, but it's got to be interesting to take a look at it. Just off through the Rolls Royce plant.
Yeah, it's good when you got lots of hundreds of acres of old farmland.
Yes.
You know, and stuff like that, it's like the windmills.
Yeah. Any citizen input? Any comments from the council? Motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, voice vote?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, thank you for attending. We're moving on to our work-study agenda.
Walsh and Kelly. Hey. William voted on Walsh and Kelly for the council, but not for redevelopment.
Oh, should we do that?
Yeah, please.
Okay, well reopen the meeting then.
Just give us the same motion you did the last time, approve the extension of Walsh and Kelly prices from 2018 into 2020.
I'll make a motion that we accept the 2018 prices for 2020 from Walsh and Kelly.
Thank you, we may have some TIF roads to do that way.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Alan.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Mary.
Hi, vote is five to zero in favor. Okay, we're moving on to.
Chairman, did you, we have been streaming the work-study sessions, at least in general. Are you wanting to continue the stream?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
I mean, we talked about not doing it, but that's okay, we'll go ahead.
Well, I mean, you need to maybe give us some direction.
Yeah, I thought we talked about not, about not streaming other boards and commissions to, to, then we have to staff those with two, two additional people, but we're here, the public has the right to hear, hear what we're talking about at a work study.
That's my opinion. Confirm that, yes.
All right.
You agree?
Yes, ma'am. That's fine.
Okay, all righty.
What I handed out to you before the meeting, and some of you got it before, is not, it's, it's the revisions, the draft of chapter three of the code that Bill finished up, and Bill, do you want to make a couple of comments or anything?
I told you, I went through section three, I had to research each one of the sections because most of it was done. And so I wanted to make sure it was up to date. That is a summary of the changes I suggest you make to section three. You will note, we're going to almost have to look at the existing code and compare it to the language that's there. But you will also note that we deleted the whole section on public access to documents. The reason I did that was because the statutes that were in effect in 1984 were changed in 1980, or 91. Changed again periodically in legislative sessions over the years. It consists of about 35 pages of definitions and other rules concerning access to public records. So you'll see in there what I did was delete those sections, have a paragraph that allows citizens to have access to inspect and copy records pursuant to those statutes. As opposed to reciting the statute, which is what's presently in your code from 1980. Consent, it.
You're just incorporating by reference?
Yeah, absolutely. And then another portion of it, we'll see, is about fees, rather than setting a fee for inspection or copying. I referenced the statute, which allows charging fees, because that can change at various times. Look at it and then we can take action on it. And if you have comments, please email them to me and I'm glad to, you know, work them into any revision.
Was there any change because of the public access counselor or not?
I'm sorry, what?
That the public access counselor has always been there?
Yes.
In the same role?
Yes.
Okay.
Our ordinance, and any ordinance, we have the subject to the state statutes.
Right.
You know, and even the existing ordinance on access to records is overridden by the state statute.
Thank you for putting the time into this.
Well, there's some statutory references in the code that don't even exist.
You, do we want to address?
This is an upcoming meeting, the whole idea is read it, you be ready for it.
Okay.
So we don't want to talk about it tonight, because we literally just got it.
Okay.
All right.
The work-study agenda is the Safety Village?
You have a letter from the Safety Village that they're asking for their, for an annual contribution. $27,500. You got my backup material that we've not made that contribution in the past. We need some direction as to what you want to do.
Well, I know that we contribute an awful lot of time with our police and fire department. That may be different, and I really think that, you know, the town of Sherrville has much more resources than we will ever have. So I would probably have to, I, I personally feel like we should keep it the same that it is if we give anything at all, any donation, anybody have any other?
Who are our representatives on the board? I know Bill Howell is one.
Bill Howell's a Sherrville representative.
He's the sheriff.
Sherrville's representative. Dave, Jim Bazan is?
Jim Bazan? Brian Kissinger?
Yeah, from the police department. Debbie is, Debbie, you've been involved with it for forever.
Yeah, I'm not on the executive board though.
Huh?
I'm not on the executive board.
You're on the board.
I'm on the board.
Board.
You have been since the start.
Yeah.
I think the Safety. I think the Safety Village is, it's a great thing, you know, my kids went to it, but they, to me, they seem off track. Yeah, I can't, I couldn't support $25,000.
Well, I believe we're one-third of the signatures on the contract, is that true? Yeah, so we should, and listen, I've been on both sides of the fence. I've talked about how they're supposed to be on their own, but I, I'd say right now is a very important time for the Safety Village. If they need some help with direction, we should help provide that. With other communities, Sherrville, St. John's are looking for our help too. We should, at this time, I believe, put in the requested amount. Listen, it's safety for our kids, whether you have kids or not, it's, it's going to be for our future, I think it's worthwhile. Someone once told me, even if it saves one or two lives, it's well worth it, so I believe we should put in our one-third amount, because I know the other communities I put in there is that. So I'm in favor of putting the 27,500.
Only Sherrville's putting in the amounts, St. John and Dyer are not Safety Villages.
They have not.
Right. They have had a lot of meetings this year to get back on track, we just had a recent one, we had one in February that Tom and I went to, correct, Tom?
Yes.
And there was a finance committee put together because of certain things happening to get back on track. And they have done a great job, because it's people who represent Dyer, Sherrville and St. John. I did bring up to the committee and the boards that Sherrville, St. John and Dyer, we haven't gotten minutes in the town like we used to, they could send them like Target place since 2016. The paper trail started. When they have meetings with the director or the board president, those meetings should include, if they're meeting with the presidents, it should be all three presidents of each town. And that hasn't been happening. Even though if that, it would never happen, because we all put our hearts in every community.
Sure.
Who lives there for the children. I've been there since there was no land and we, Randy, myness and I went out and got the land and got the million dollar loan to go out there, we put our games on it and Sherrville took over on it. But there's got to be a say-so for all three towns, Sherrville in the last few years have been the main say-so. Yes, if they did go belly up, they get 60%. We only, I think we only get 15 or 20% in St. John, because it's housed in Sherrville. So I just think they're going on the right track, we got to let the finance committee finish their finance and get the budget all together so they can present it to you guys and to St. John and to Sherrville. And once we hit a budget, and even in the past, we asked for a budget each time, where was the money going? Recently, the bingo has been stopped, because we're not with Patricia anymore, they have to find a new one. But with the pandemic going on, it's going to be hard to get everything back anyway, so it just, we've just put it to a halt right now until it can be looked at. There's another committee being put together for the bylaws to update those, because bylaws were passed in 2011, but they were never recorded out of the county clerk's house, or in the clerk's office out in the county. So those addictions, they're no good, we have to redo it.
Right.
So it's like, I don't know why it wasn't filed, but just small things, but it's nothing to, you know, the village will keep going strong, I think we just need to look at it. You guys need to get a budget of what has been going on there for 2019 to 2020. I think it's your right to have that budget.
Right, right, and I think that's the bottom line is accountability, you know, certainly the mission is great, it's, it's perfect, because so many kids have been saved, I'm sure, because of the Safety Village, but they have to be accountable for what they do as well.
And, you know, Tim Schmidt and I have talked many a times about this, and he is in full agreement, you know, that's why we were all, but budgets were put together and stuff, the budget groups. And you got some good people on there, you know, you got different councilmen from each area.
Yeah, I went to one meeting, it was the one in February, something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I personally, I'd like to see that plan before making a decision, I'd like to see what they're going to do differently to correct. like to see what they're going to do differently to correct the finances before we, before we put more money into it, I mean, the Safety Village concept is a fantastic concept, I fully support it, you know, when I see $46,000 for a veterans museum, that's off the mark, in my opinion, of a Safety Village, um, you know, we scrape, we're scraping to try to find funds for a veterans memorial at our parks, we don't need to be building one in Sherrville.
I mean, I'd like to see the council, you know, do their initial, what they've been doing, 10,000, until they get all these reports, so at least the Safety Village had that point, the last reported, I think we had 126,000, um, that they reported, but I didn't get those financials, the minutes I gave, I brought back to the town and put in a Safety Village file in the office, but it's like, I called to get those documents that were handed out that they ran out of, and I didn't get those, so, we still need all of those, because we got to get back to documentation, or they should be emailing them to the town, so this way everybody can look at them.
Now, does every other community donate their time like we do with our police and fire?
I know Sherrville does, I really can't speak for St. John.
Okay.
I know Dyer, we sent a lot of help out there, police, fire, public works, stuff.
Right, right.
I mean, yeah, Jeff's here, but I understand that labor, for the most part, is supposedly rotated through, I know it was that way for the bingo, each community took a one-third of the, the load on, setting tables up on, what day was it, Tuesday or Monday? Monday, yeah, so, it's been done that way.
If I may, could I ask for a couple items, which would be, present a copy of the budget, and have someone here from the Safety Village to explain and answer our questions on it, and also, I'd like a copy of the contract that the town of Dyer has signed with the Safety Village.
The original agreement?
I think it's the second one.
Yeah.
We had an original, and then at some point.
Three communities, it's not with the Safety Village.
Well, with the three communities, I know they had a second version of it.
Yeah, that was after the Quad Towns, Steve, when the Highland backed out of it.
Yeah, we'll have, I'll ask Bill Howell to come, he's the chairman of the board.
Yes, he's perfect, yes, yes, he's very knowledgeable.
And Bill Jarvis together, since Jarvis is the director.
Sure.
Jarvis knows the environment.
Yep.
I mean.
Any other discussion?
Come all the time before Bill Jarvis.
Have we ever entertained a per capita style of donation, I mean, we'll never meet, never match the tax revenue that Sherrville has with 41 and with 30.
Resources are, yeah.
Right, so, I mean, to me, I think we would, we should look into, entertain some sort of a per capita, or for something that's right-sized for each town's budget.
Yeah.
I think Sherrville and St. John mostly.
Yeah.
I think Sherrville and St. John take it out of their industrial areas, in which we don't have an industrial area, like, with that tax revenue coming in, but I mean, the new, the clerk over in Sherrville, might have changed that, I don't know, I haven't discussed it with them.
They're taking out their TIF, we have the TIF, that's, I mean, there is no industrial area tax, it's going to come out of, I don't know if that's what they're taking out of or not.
I can doubt it, but.
I doubt it, too, because it's not, doesn't fit into a TIF area.
They have a lot of industry that brings in a lot of dollars, whether it's in TIF or the general fund.
Well, I know.
They got all those big dollars coming in.
Well, yeah, which can't, we can't just say it comes out of their industrial tax, but there isn't such a thing, you know, I, we'll find out where they're actually taking it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not on yet, but I've got a couple other items for the work-study agenda, one is, I spoke earlier today at the town council meeting, I would like to, the town of Dyer to look into an ordinance restricting the types of guns, or guns in our parks, especially during events, and I don't know about any other areas, are they allowed in our meetings here? Are they allowed in town hall? I'm talking about the assault rifles, and, because they're carrying them out there.
I believe there is an ordinance that only allows warrant officers.
Yes.
For the town?
It is.
But what about other town properties, such as parks and?
Well, it doesn't apply to parks.
Okay, so, could we?
If you're looking at one, are you looking at no weapons, not just firearms, but knives and chemical weapons and other things like that across the board?
I didn't think about the other ones, I would ask to defer to the police chief and other groups that could provide some better insight on that, I was just looking on the concerns of the residents that approached me on Saturday, on what their concerns about some people from out of town carrying assault rifles and.
Were they from out of state?
Out of town, I don't know if they're out of state.
If they're from St. John or Monser, they're not breaking the law, if they're from Illinois, they'd be breaking the law.
No, 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 I, I agree, because we have, no.
Citizens from Illinois can carry a long gun.
Yeah.
It's a long one.
Can't carry a handgun.
Right, I don't think they could carry a long gun if you weren't a citizen.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and the issue is, should we allow them in our parks, with the kids running around, and your different events that we have, I surely put an envision.
I don't think it's ever been an issue, they were just there.
It's never been an issue.
Well, it's an issue now, it's an issue, residents have asked me to bring it up here, and, they want to know if we have an ordinance, and when I inquired, I was told, no, we do not, all guns, long rifles, assault rifles, doesn't matter if they got 150 clips with them, they're allowed to have it in, and I, they asked me about looking into an ordinance to not allow them in parks, other communities have similar ordinance.
So then, you're going to also, you're just looking at long guns, or you're looking at handguns?
I, my concern from the residents was just at the long guns, because they were open and exposed, they have a handgun, I believe the, it must be permitted, and it must be concealed, is that true, chief?
It doesn't have to be concealed, but it has to be permitted.
Permitted, so.
But, but, the, if you're going to prohibit weapons, you prohibit weapons across.
Okay, no, I'm not a.
You can prohibit people even with permits from carrying weapons in certain areas.
The only issue that was brought up was the open assault rifle and long gun carrying, if it's what we want to look at, ban all except for our police department, I'm not a publicity, I, I would probably need more information to see on the reasons why we'd want to do it, but, I, you know, we have concerns from citizens, the parents, the children in the park right now, doesn't matter if it happens once, if it happens twice or five times, it's an issue, so we can address it, or you can say, no, you don't.
It was a two-hour event, and, to my knowledge.
Was anybody threatened, or did anybody have a weapon pointed at?
I mean, how many weapons were there? I don't know.
If there was a weapon pointed, they would have been arrested for assault.
Two, three, visible rifles that I saw during.
Two?
Yes.
Two.
And nobody was threatening anybody, or they had them slung over their shoulder?
No reports of any kind of.
Okay.
No, the issue was, parents were concerned in the park, about why we allow them, and why the children.
We allow them, because we have a second amendment in this country, and if people aren't afraid of it, that's, I mean.
We have a second, Alan, we have a second amendment, and I fully support it, but you're not allowed to carry guns or assault rifles in certain areas either, because there's common sense restriction, so, I, I'm going to push it, and you got the right to vote no against it, but there's some parents and children that had big concerns about people carrying assault weapons, did you go to the community market event?
No, I did not.
No, you did not, well, I know you've been to Dyer Fest.
Right.
In the past, can you envision a bunch of people carrying assault rifles? If you think that's okay, then, that's your right, I'm just saying the concerns that appear.
It's never, it's never happened.
It's not a bunch of people. Well, listen, we said it never happened, but it happened, some people brought assault weapons in the park, I don't know for sure, I was told they're from out of town, parents in the park came to me about their concern, and asked me to bring it up here, and the kids were asking, so I'm bringing it up, and I would like.
So, my wife walks through the do, uh, park in the morning with the dog, she can't carry her handgun with her?
I did not say that, if you're listening to me, Alan.
Why, I, I don't, I think you're way off course, it's not an issue, we don't have, it's never been an issue.
It's a, it was a two-hour event.
So if it's not an issue, you would have no problem voting on it?
Yes, but this was an issue for the citizens here.
For some citizens.
Our Dyer Town citizens came to me, who were in the park, either walking or playing with their kids, or walking their dogs, when they seen that, there was no, in, in my view, they didn't have no reason to be in a park with their weapons, all they had to do was walk on the street, it would have been a non-issue at that point.
So when they're at Summer Fest, and there's gangbangers walking around with possibly guns in their shorts, they're not afraid of that, though?
Here, what does that have to do with someone, Alan?
You're, you're talking about law-abiding citizens, most of them are veterans, they were out there.
Alan.
Making a statement that they are standing up against a group that is against their constitutional rights, that's why they were there.
I don't know why they were there.
That's why they were there, because the group you support, BLM, does not like the second amendment.
You weren't there at the park, were you?
No, I wouldn't.
And you did not talk to them, did you? You weren't there to talk to them, so don't.
I wouldn't give those idiots the time of day.
We have.
Okay, let's continue.
We have an issue about it, so if we could look into it.
Is there any more discussion on this issue?
I, we have an issue, I would ask that, if, if no one else wants a copy.
Do you have anything else on your list?
But I'm going to ask.
Do you have anything else?
You have three people that want us to draft something for consideration.
I would like you to draft something for consideration.
There's, I, I would have, there's no scenario where I would vote in favor of restricting any firearms anywhere.
No, no.
I'm against it.
Against it. Okay, moving on, is there any other issue?
Yes, I got several more issues.
Okay.
Next issue, Fenton Hills Pond, I know Tom said you're going to give a report on it.
Yeah.
I checked into it, the report from the stormwater board is a couple decades old.
No, we, we had a discussion.
Hang on, let me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, as the report through the emails were sent, they're on a 1990-something study on the bacteria that eats away the muck, I talked to some experts, and a couple different places, the technology has grown, just like everywhere else, and medicine has changed, bacteria has changed, in order to use them to be effective for the bacteria, the largest bucket with the largest, they call them hockey pucks, to be distributed to the pond, and we put them in once a month, would be about $700 to start their program, and that would be enough to get us to the end of summer, normally, you start in the beginning, but, they said we could get a big jump on it, and reduce a lot of the muck, obviously, the irrigation needs to be done to provide air and air, the fountain was, as everyone said, more aesthetic than anything else, so we'd have to look at that, the other issue I have is on the rail line property, I cannot get no response.
Oh, you mean the bike paths you're talking about?
Yeah, for the bike pair, I don't know if you had any luck with your attorney from the railroad?
I have nothing to report here at this time, you told me you would get that by the end of this one.
Yeah, Neil had a report on that the last meeting.
I'm going to do another second communication to the CEO, he was, CEO of North, Norfolk Southern, he was promoted about two years ago, they had moved their center into Georgia now, no longer in Virginia, so I will reach out, but, after that, there is, the only option I see, and was reported from the service transportation board, is to get estimates on it and process it through court, so that's where we're at, if we can't, if we still want to utilize that line for a bike trail, we'd have to look on to get some estimates.
Okay, is that the last thing?
And, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I will say that, that is the system's number one project that they'd like to see as far as amenities in this town, so, I, I agree with Steve, we need to push and push and push, and, and move forward on this one way or another, with that bike trail, I have a question worth, I would just like, Bill, I'd like you to look into, if you could, I ran into, talked to one of the vendors at the community market Tuesday, who's a beekeeper, selling honey and, and various products, do we have an ordinance on beehives? Would, would be my question, and do we need, nothing prohibited, okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, and we will close this me, meeting, and we have an executive session, I'm sorry.
When I was talking with the taxes, Dyer's commercial taxes and industrial doesn't meet up to the other towns, but I know, you said the TIF district, how would the TIF be able to help with that from Dyer and St. John?
They really shouldn't.
No.
Well, TIF isn't supposed to be used for operations or maintenance.
Yep.
Other than, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.